Good afternoon, everybody. In accordance with Section forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Yonishnabe, the Chipewa, the Hadnashoni, and the Wenda peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations and U.S. Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you'll be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During that time, your camera will be enabled, and you'll be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you'll be reinstated as attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use shared screen or any other panelist controls during your video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect that instruction. People attending in person who wish to receive a copy of the decision of the committee to an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure you include your name, your address, and your email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body, TLAB, will be sending out notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body or, in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Regarding the procedure for the hearing, I'll call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation, if desired, and when the committee does not require a presentation, applicants will advise the chair should they wish to speak. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I'll comment when you're reaching your five minutes. Any presentation or other material you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first. They'll make a presentation to the committee. And I'm just going to note again, committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. Committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call on speakers in the hearing room first, and then those online. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they've finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant will have an opportunity to rebut only those issues raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. I will then take the application into committee for a decision. All right. Mr. Deputy Secretary, actually, before we get to our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, I should ask, do we have any conflicts of interest? Are there any declarations of interest we should know about? Panel members, staff? I see none. Okay. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we have any... Any housekeeping this afternoon in addition to the deferral request?
I'm just going to read a little blurb for you, and maybe to people who are attending and listening. With the recent can of post-labor disruption, the City of Toronto was able to continue with our Committee of Adjustment public hearings. We were able to do so because recent regulatory changes under the Planning Act modernized public notice requirements, which enable municipalities to provide alternative notice of public hearings for minor variance and consent applications. Committee staff continued to ensure public notification of upcoming hearings in accordance with the Planning Act and its regulations. This included publishing hearing notices in the Toronto Star and the City of Toronto website, and posting links to the agendas and application information on our webpages, and provided notice through the city's various social media channels. Additionally, the Committee of Adjustment continued to ensure that a public hearing notice sign was posted on the property in advance of the hearing.
All right, thank you for that. Okay. Any other housekeeping items? Okay, let's start with our deferral requests. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, do we have any deferral requests this afternoon?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe number eighteen, Tenrychert, is requesting a deferral.
Number ten, Rychert Crescent. Purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a walkout basement, covered rear patio, and green roof. Five variances before us, lot coverage, building height, side main mall height, west side yard setback, and driveway width. On file material from the applicant, correspondence with TRCA, transportation memo, as well as a memo from ravine and natural features. Do we have our agent or applicant with us?
Hi there, Lindsay Bruce, agent for the owners at Tenrychert.
Hi, Ms. Bruce. My understanding is you're requesting a deferral.
Yes, we are requesting a deferral today. Came to light through the comments from the community planner that there was an error in our zoning notice, as well as further investigation found that we were actually missing one variance in the zoning notice. So we asked for a deferral so that we could clarify those items before coming in front of committee.
All right, very good. Okay, let's take this into committee.
All right, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm okay to forward a motion for deferral of the applications that allows the applicant to make the correction for the variances that are required.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fazeli. Do I have a second for Mr. Fazeli's motion? Yes, Mr. Maritiari, all in favor? That is unanimous, that application is deferred. Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, any other deferral requests for the afternoon session?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything else on my list. Why don't we start with item number twelve?
All right, item number twelve. Thirty-three Suncrest Drive. The purpose of the application is to construct a new dwelling. This application was previously deferred, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. We have a number of variances, including east side yard setback for a canopy and east side yard setback for a rear porch. Lot coverage, building height, east side yard setback for the building, west side yard setback for the building, number of stories, and stair width, and encroachment. On file material from the applicant, memo from urban forestry, and as well as a number of form letters in support. Do we have our agent or applicant with us?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Your name and your address, please.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members. Ida Evangelista, fifty-three Bentworth Avenue, Toronto. I am here on behalf of the owners of thirty-three Suncrest.
All right, Ms. Evangelista, welcome back to committee. I should ask, this application was before us back in January. Is...are there any modifications to the application?
Yes, so when we were back in January, we did defer the application as planning staff had some concerns with the lot coverage. At that point in time, the lot coverage, a lot of it was due to the back covered porches were excavated underneath. So that being said, we have changed our lot coverage. We have worked with planning. They are, as you know, now in support of the application that is in front of you today, as we have reduced the lot coverage to the home, and a portion of that lot coverage is due to, this is a unique design, it's actually, it's quite a beautiful design, where we have side, the side yard, a side courtyard. So part of the coverage is also contains that side courtyard.
All right, very good. I do note that we do have another speaker I'd like to hear from. Staff, do we have another speaker on this item?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, this is Jaffer Hussein from thirty-six Suncrest Drive.
Welcome.
Hi. Is it my turn to speak?
Yes.
Okay, so, you know, this was submitted in January. They pulled it back at the time, and one of the reasons they gave was that they're going to consult with the residents association, which was not done. I don't believe that the residents association was approached. I'm the president of the residents association. I certainly didn't hear about it. I'm still very concerned about this application. I appreciate that the lot coverage has been reduced, but it's still too much, and the lot is covered with lots of trees. And so that's my first concern, that this building with all the setbacks being cut short, it's going to mean that a lot of trees are going to go. And more importantly, City of Toronto keeps talking about retaining our tree canopy, and we're going to lose that tree canopy if we keep allowing these humongous houses to be built on these lots. That is my big concern, because that is changing the nature of our area, and a lot of our members are not very happy about that at all, because we're losing trees, we're losing greenery, because more, larger and larger houses are being built. The height issue is still a thing. It's better than before, but again, three stories, it's a height issue. It means that any views of the trees in the park, Sunnybrook Park, are now going to be permanently blocked together with the sun, and so that, again, our members are not happy about. Overall, I think my, that's, those are my biggest concerns. And with the impervious driveway, it's going to have a circular driveway, I see in the drawing. That means that, you know, a huge amount of the lot is going to be impervious. And what's going to happen to water? How is water going to be managed when there's rain, snow? Where is the water going to go? It's going to flood the adjoining properties. So these are all my concerns, and I would appreciate if the Committee of Adjustment keeps that in mind. But overall, the biggest concern is the loss of tree canopy. And I've seen some of the committees of the city talking about urban forestry and retention of it, and so the city is going a little schizophrenic at the moment, because on the one hand, it wants to keep the canopy, and on the other hand, is letting people go with huge houses and no land left to grow trees. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that submission. I'm just wondering, are there any specific trees on the site plan or on the survey that you can point out maybe at risk with the proposed development?
So you're asking me?
Yes, I am. Yes, Mr. Hussein.
Okay, well, you know, if you look at the drawing, I'm not a drawsperson, but what I can see is that the trees that are fairly exposed to the existing property, and to increase the footprint, which is what is being proposed, I don't see those trees being protected.
All right, so you're talking about trees in the front yard, then?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to ask the same question of the agent, because I'm curious myself to understand how this may or may not affect the canopy. Any, before we go back to the agent, I want to ask my colleagues if they have any further questions of the neighbor? None? Okay, thank you. All right, any other speakers on this item in the gallery? None, and none online. Okay, let's go back to Ms. Evangelista. We've heard from the neighbor. I want to give you an opportunity to address some of the comments that were made.
Yes, well, let's discuss the trees. Now, a lot of the trees will be maintained. We have just recently had an arborist come to the site. I would like to add, a lot of these trees have not been maintained over the years and are currently structurally and botanically in poor condition. So those trees that are in poor condition, obviously, they're quite tall. The elements, you know, our climate, the way it is, we have to keep the neighbors safe, and, you know, we have to keep safe conditions. So forestry has reviewed the plans. They have taken a look at it, and as you see from, you know, they don't have any specific comments regarding the future of how the tree canopy will or will not be preserved. For the trees that will be removed because they are in structurally and botanically not in good condition, we will have to replant more trees. We do not have a landscape variance, and I know one of the concerns that Mr. Hussein mentioned was that he was concerned because of the circular driveway and water and snow. We don't have any landscape. The house currently has a circular driveway, I would like to add, and we do not have any landscape variances. So we are able to maintain, and we do have substantial amount of pervious land on this area, on this property. The one thing that I would like to mention is that he made a comment that there was no reach-out. I tend to disagree. Members, as you know, I always reach out. I also hand-delivered packages to the neighbors adjacent to and across the street, and number thirty-six was one of them. And it did contain eleven seventeen, a copy of the plans outlining all the variances for ease of reference, a letter introducing myself and to please contact me with any comments, questions, or concerns. And I didn't hear from anyone. We do have the letters of support from the neighbors. The height, the other comment that I will meant, that I'd like to address that he mentioned was relating to the height. So this particular design is taken to the... It's taken to the very, it's a pitched roof, so taken to the highest pitch of the roof. Although I would like to add that this does align with the built form of the neighboring homes, as you see from photos that I have provided to you on pages six, seven, and I believe on page five, two. And you'll see various photos of the rear yard, but will not, you know, present any overall shadowing to neighboring, to surrounding, no undue shadowing, overlook, no privacy impact will result backs onto Sunnybrook Park. We've been very, we've been, that's why we, if there is any balcony that's, you know, maintained to the interior of the property at the back. So in response to Mr. Hussein of thirty-six Suncrest, reach-outs there, the property is able to maintain all the water within its own property. We do not have any landscape variances. The height will not, you know, create any privacy impacts to the front of the street, across the street. And I will respectfully submit that this is, this home that we are proposing is very characteristic to the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Evangelista. Let's take this into committee. Yes, Ms. Sankar Peralta.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I, you know, I think I understand this application, and I think that coming back and having had, you know, the applicant or agent for the applicant has had discussions with city staff and with the neighbors, and I do believe them that they do post and try to get as much feedback as possible. I've seen that. I can't guarantee for this one, but I would imagine that it was done. I think in terms of the variances, you know, with the explanations provided by the agent here today, I'm accepting of that, and I understand it. And it will still also be subject to forestry regardless. So, you know, I'm in, I think I'm in favor of this application.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I maybe just add a quick comment. I, you know, in reviewing the application, I, my notes were almost identical to what I heard from Ms. Evangelista. I think the one thing I was, I did flag in my review was the lot coverage. It was a little bit high. But upon a further investigation, I realized a lot of that is attributed towards the covered porch and accessory structures at the rear. I also made a comment that while they were quite large structures at the rear that take up a lot of the lot coverage, the area underneath is unexcavated. So I just thought that was, that may or may not help with things like drainage if you don't have a subterranean level. Any comments from colleagues? I don't know if there's any appetite, if, with any approval, to ensure that the covered porch at the rear remains unexcavated below? I don't know if that's a concern or not. That might help address some of the overage on the lot coverage?
I don't even know if that's a permitted statement, I think, is what I would be concerned with. And I would, I would ask that our planning team via the Deputy Secretary Treasurer to weigh in on that, but I'm not sure how that would be worded. That wouldn't cause future concerns for this development.
Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, is there anything that would prohibit us from limiting approval of the lot coverage to require that the covered porches at the rear remain unexcavated below? That there's no basement or subterranean level?
You could probably make it a condition, but I don't know if you want to tie it directly to coverage, because I don't know what else might impact coverage.
Right. I, maybe before we go down that path, I should ask my colleagues whether there's any appetite for such a condition or if we're okay. Okay, Mr. Fazeli is...
I am also okay as is.
Okay. I'm going to retract my suggestion then, as, after hearing comments from my colleagues. So, Ms. Sankar Peralta, yes?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead then, through you, Mr. Chair. I'll make a motion to approve this application for all the reasons I had stated prior, and I'll make this subject to forestry.
All right. Do I have a second, by Mr. Maritiari, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, that application is approved. We are moving on to item number thirteen. Number seventy-two Church Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a four-story apartment building with fourteen residential units. This application was deferred on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Variances include building height, mechanical penthouse height, parapet height, amenity space area, and number of bicycle parking spaces, on file material from the applicant, and an email from community planning. All right, we have our agent with us. Oh, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Jacobs. I'm an associate at Begliary Group. We are the agent working with the owner of seventy-two Church for the application before you today. Just before I get into the variances, I just wanted to note that this application did receive zoning approval from council in March of twenty twenty-four. The number of stories in the building remains four as approved. The number of units is fourteen as approved. The type of units, as in regard to number of bedrooms, two, one, two, three bedrooms, have not changed. There's been no changes to any floor areas or setbacks to the structure. What we are dealing with today is a couple minor changes to the building plans that came to light as our architects were working with the structural engineers on their building permit drawings. And through that review of the plans and addressing updated Ontario Building Code requirements, a number of these variances were identified, as well, there's another variance that I'll get into later that is a correction from the previous zoning bylaw. The variances before you, I'll start off with the building height. This is an increase to fourteen point nine meters from an approved fourteen meters. It is still within the fifteen meters permitted in the North York Secretary Plan. The height was increased because there were some changes to the thickness of the floor slabs from going from a concrete to a wood frame structure, as well as to deal with some drainage from the roof. It is a flat roof, but to allow for water to drain, a portion of it is actually kind of sloped. So taking everything together, it pushed up the overall building height to fourteen point nine, as shown on the plans. With respect to the mechanical penthouse, this is just, corresponds to the increase in building height. There's, the actual height of the mechanical penthouse did decrease from when the application was approved by council, but we still require variance for the overall height of the mechanical penthouse. Same goes with the parapets. It's a function of the overall building height, so if that increased, we needed increase in the parapet height. But those, the parapets above the top of the roof have not changed. They might have actually decreased a little bit in height. The other variances, as related to the bicycle parking, our original plans always maintained seventeen bicycle parking spaces, fifteen underground for residents, and two for visitors. However, when the site-specific zoning bylaw was adopted, there was an error that stated all seventeen spaces were to be underground. So, wait, this is a bit of a correction, but then also, we had to eliminate one of the underground parking spaces through the structural design of the building, and the system for the underground stormwater had to shift a little bit, which kind of, we basically ran out of space for that fifteenth bicycle parking space. However, we are still maintaining one resident bicycle parking space per unit within the underground level. And lastly, we require variance in terms of the outdoor manti area. When the bylaw was adopted by council, a portion of the outdoor manti area was on the roof. This was requested by staff many years ago, because the original application had twenty-eight units, and they wanted an increase in the amount of outdoor manti area for the residents. Through time, as the application evolved to fourteen units with larger family-oriented bedrooms, the outdoor manti area on the roof was maintained. However, through the design of the permit drawings, there were concerns in terms of OBC requirements for snow, drainage, as well as accessibility concerns, and the owners would have to extend the mechanical penthouse actually another level to accommodate an elevator to the roof for accessible, accessibility purposes. And also, there were safety and maintenance concerns by the owner by having an outdoor manti area on the roof. This was offset by putting additional outdoor manti area at the rear of the property at grade, including a children's playground and some outdoor seating. That area was originally just some landscaping, like some shrubs and trees. All the trees that were proposed originally are maintained and shown on the current landscaping plans. And overall, the total outdoor manti area equates to about just under nine square meters per unit, which in perspective to the City of Toronto's current zoning bylaw, five, six, nine, to twenty thirteen, that requires... that requires only four square meters of outdoor manti area. So while there is an overall decrease, we still exceed what would typically be required in an, an application today within, in the city's comprehensive zoning bylaw. I believe I've addressed all the, the variances. It is my opinion that these variances meet the overall intent of the official plan. We, as I noted, we've maintained the fifteen, within fifteen meter building height as prescribed in the secondary plan. All the variances are, meet the intent of the zoning bylaw, which, as you know, was approved for the site for four stories, fourteen units. And none of the setbacks or floor area or coverage have changed. The variances, you know, represent good planning and they're also suitable for the site and are D minor. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Uh, I just, one small question. I'm just looking at your, one of your elevation drawings. I just note that, you know, generally you've got about three point one five meters between all of your floor levels. But on the fourth level, you've got an additional point four meters, three point five four three meters on that particular level. Any specific, is there a technical reason for it or is it just desirability to have higher ceiling heights on that level?
I, I, I'd have to speak to the architect to confirm exactly. I think there may be a technical requirement for it. And in regards to that floor, maybe there was a slight increase in the overall floor to ceiling height. But overall, like all, as noted, all the slabs thicknesses have changed. And I don't know, maybe it's a way that they had measured the drawing that shows that additional height for that top level.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm trying to understand, you know, between the initial approval and, and now. I mean, usually those things are set out pretty early on. You have an increase in height. There's a specific reason for it. I just, in this case, I don't really have a specific reason. I don't quite understand where that adjustment is needed because it was approved as a four-story building. It's still being proposed as a four-story building. We're talking about a slight increase, but I, perhaps worth, might be of interest to understand a little bit. I asked my colleagues if they have any questions? No. Okay, we do have some other folks to hear from. We'll, we'll get you back up here for response shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody in person, welcome.
My name is Donna Owens. I live at three oh one Grand View Way, property adjacent to seventy-two Church.
Okay.
I was here in August when we did the deferral and I agreed to that. First off, I just want to thank city staff, Emily and Todd, for being so responsive and helping me get here today because with the postal strike, I got the notice Tuesday afternoon and online. I thought I had a subscription, so I was waiting for updates to come online, but nothing happened. And I noticed the sign was posted, but the sign was knocked down a couple of weeks ago, at least a couple of weeks ago. I didn't want to step on the property to actually look at the sign, but just flag that as, you know, I know, talked to staff about it as well. Anyways, so in early twenty twenty-four, North York Community Council met several times regarding the zoning of this property. At the February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four meeting, the item was allowed for rezoning and was adopted. And I believe the Willardale councillor voted in favor. We have met as a community and neighbors with the councillor several times regarding various issues about this property. As Mark mentioned, March twenty twenty-five, City Council did approve it. Nineteen city councillors voted yes to the request. Six were absent and one voted no. That was our own councillor here in Willardale that voted no about this property site. Having spoken to her in person, her concerns were about the space, the size, the garbage, waste management, and privacy. And I'd like to note that in the council's decision back in March, it included item number four. And I, this is a quote, and I have a copy of that document. "The Director of Community Planning, North York District, to work with the applicant as part of the site plan control process to construct a fence along the east property line to provide for privacy to the existing residents on that adjacent property." So now we have here as one of the proposed variances, it's stated in the letter from the developer to the city in June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, section number twenty, section number four in the city notice. They are removing the rooftop amenity and increasing the at-grade outdoor amenity area on the east side of the property adjacent to the current townhouses at Grand View Way. There's no mention in the proposal of the variances about this increased amenity area how it respects privacy, noise, and the safety to the Grand View residents. And that the city council actually flagged back to community planning. So I'd like to have addressed from somebody, the Developer Staff Committee, whether or not that direction to the Director of Community Planning in North York was taken into consideration for the, for the approval of these variances regarding the east side outdoor amenity space.
Okay, questions? Okay. I believe we have another speaker as well to hear from. Staff, someone online?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Debbie Nathanson has requested to unmute. Debbie Nathanson, if you hear us, can you please unmute yourself?
I'm sorry, is there a number for a person to call in on instead of trying to fix a computer? Can you give that number on there? I know, but could you post it now so that this person can actually speak? Because obviously expecting a computer thing, there's a glitch. And if telephone's an alternate, at least they can get verbal input. Yeah, and if she doesn't have that paper there, she can't call in, right? Is there a way of putting the number up there?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I, I don't know if you guys are doing anything there, but I'm not hearing anything.
Oh, yes, Ms. Sankar Peralta, we're trying to get a hold of our second speaker right now, staff. So we're just, we're, we're trying to give him an opportunity to connect with us.
Okay, thank you, because I was hearing something in the background, but it wasn't.
Yes, uh, just for everybody, yeah, thank you for that. Yes, there was, there was some dialogue in the chamber, didn't come through the mic. Just some assistance in trying to connect that individual with, with us. Yeah.
I was looking to see if I had his phone number. I don't.
Okay, can you, can we, the number?
Four one six two two three two four nine seven. She's at six oh seven.
No problem, I just, I'll call my daughter.
The name is Debna.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think from what I overheard, staff, the speaker's not available right now? Okay, I heard correct in the background. So the speakers aren't available. I, staff, do we have any other speakers online? Okay. At this time, I'd like to turn it back to our agent, provide them an opportunity to respond to the comments that were made by Ms., Ms. Owens, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, just to respond to comments made by Ms. Owens. Yes, sir, whenever you're ready.
Uh, thank you. And, and thank you for the, the question. Allowed me to provide a response. So when this application, this only application came to committee last year, there was a represent, a, a member of the public who had concerns with privacy on the east side of our property and requested a higher, something to do with a higher fence. Through the, after the council adopted it, including the recommendations that were presented by the, by Donna, the, we worked with actually the councillor's staff and office on this. The councillor's, the councillor's office set up and, had set up a number of stakeholder meetings for, through the site plan approval application. I believe only one meeting did occur between myself and members of the community. And we were always willing to work with them and to address this. We had, I think we had proposed, I think it was requested, we do a six-foot fence along the east side. And we were completely amenable to doing that. When it was, when that was conveyed to the, the neighbor who had concerns, and this is just what I heard from the councillor's office, they felt that actually would have been too high because there's a bit of a great difference between our site and the site to the east. So a six-foot fence equated to almost an eight-foot fence. And so we proposed to keep it where it was. I, I believe it's four feet or six feet or whatever. I don't have the details exactly where it was, but we did work on, working with councillor's office on that. We had no direct communication with any of the residents who had concerns with it. The councillor's office wanted to maintain that, the communications through them, from my understanding. We were more than happy to accommodate and the current site plan application and landscape plan and site plan demonstrate what we believe was accepted. Again, I don't have, this is just through the councillor's office. As far as the location of the additional manti area, it's actually on the north side, which is the rear of the property. Where there's any sort of additional amenity space, such as the children's little play tot or tot lot that we are, we're proposing, that's not along the east side of the rear property. It's more, actually more centered to the west side. And again, like this was also suggested to us many years ago when we had met with the councillor to provide a, a tot lot for this development to address, you know, to provide something for families with children, which we were happy to do. As well, just in terms of like privacy, I just want to note by removing the outdoor manti space from the roof actually takes away a lot of overlooked concerns from anyone that might have concerns of privacy being invaded from, you know, people on top of the roof looking down perhaps into rear yards, where now all the outdoor manti space is at grade. And whether, you know, the fences that we're proposing are acceptable, we, we certainly think they are. However, you know, that's up for the people on the other side to determine. And also, if I just may add one more thing to what my previous presentation, just to clarify, we're maintaining a hundred percent rental units. That was brought up at the previous hearing. There's no intention to do condominiums here, a hundred percent rental, and I've confirmed that with the owner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Masiari.
Quick question. So this application, I can say, so this, this application is, is it in SPA stage? Or you already passed SPA stage? The reason that I'm asking this question is for the fence. Usually these things are being documented in the site plan application. So has it been like documented there or you're still in the process of getting the SPA?
Through the chair, we're in the process of getting SPA. We've made maybe like nine site plan submissions. We've made a couple since the application was approved and where we've incorporated the fence, the changes to the fence. So that has been in the plan for the last couple submissions. We are, it's currently waiting a final review of our application pending the variances. Right, staff wanted to make sure, ensure that these variances were approved before they do a final review and issue NOAC.
Okay, thanks.
May I be asked some of your questions?
It's a.
About the fence specifically?
I.
It's because of this discussion that the question's coming up?
If I have you down to speak, I've got to, he's got a rebuttal again. I'll allow it.
Thank you.
That's to my discretion. Uh, come down and please state your name and address.
Thank you for allowing my comments. My name is Mary Klynyevsky. I live at two one six Grand View Way. And my issue with this proposed one point five meter fence is all throughout the property on the three sides that this property abuts us. We're a development all around it on three sides. I honestly don't know who the developer has been communicating with, whether it's been with the management office, with the shared facilities board, or who it's actually been. Anybody who speaks officially on behalf of our corporation, as far as I know, hasn't been contacted. This isn't just about privacy, it's also about safety. For example, at the north end of the property, our walkway that goes past one of our five hundred buildings is at least four feet higher than what the ground is where this development is. So if you only put a one point five meter fence, which I guess is about this high, anybody can climb over, fall over onto the other side. Currently, the fence that is there, which our corporation has just paid to fix because the property owner has been negligent in tree maintenance. We've had two times where their branches fell down and actually broke the fence and came across our property. That fence is about this high. So that keeps everybody safe in the periphery. So the proposed fence is going to be shorter than that, so there's a safety concern there. Now, on the east side, in order to access the side recreational area, it's going to be elevated at least two feet. So if you have a four-foot fence plus the two feet, you're now looking at people being at knee level and possibly falling over and seeing over into neighbors' property. So the current height of the fence is suitable for the layout of the properties. Now, with that amendment of raising the right side, a discussion has to happen about raising the height of the fence. And it needs to be an official discussion that involves the people who can bind our corporation through legalities and stuff into any kind of an agreement. And as far as I know, that has not occurred. I had no plan to speak, but in hearing what is happening and that it's just going to be kind of glossed over and we might fix it later, that's not acceptable.
Yeah, so I just, I'll, I'll speak briefly to that. My colleague asked whether or not this had gone through SPA site plan approval. And the reason he, I, and I'll let him, maybe he'll add, but the reason I think that he asked that is because frankly, those, it's the site plan approval where these things get flushed out.
Exactly.
Fence heights. We're really just dealing with the, the zoning today, so things like the massing, the building height. We do get into fences, but it's usually, it usually has more to do with privacy and onlook and how certain variances. If we're, if we're allowing a variance, for example, that allows for a, a platform raised in the air, we want to know. That's when we start getting into screening because we're allowing the platform variance, therefore we want to have some mitigating factors. When it comes to safety, like to anything safety, we're really dealing with the building code. And the building code is very. And the building code is very separate from zoning. We don't have any, any play with respect to building code. You either complies with the building code or it doesn't comply with the building code. It's not really up for us to say, well, it could be a safety issue, it may not be a safe, safety issue. That's really up for the, the building, A, the building code examiner, uh, to, uh, tri- find. If he, if he hasn't safety issue, they'll, they'll, before they issue the permits, they'll flag that. But also the, the inspector on site. Um, there's certain heights that are required to the building code for, uh, railing heights, and that's based on the difference in grades of, right? You're higher up, m- more risk of, uh, you know, injury through a, through a taller, uh, transition. You require a higher, uh, guard than per se if you're, it's only a two-foot difference. So those are prescribed to the building code, it's not really, we can't really, you know, make that, put that in as a requirement. Um, it would really get flushed out at the site plan approval stage. And the counselor, from my understanding, is, uh, someone that you can reach out to that is involved, uh, with that, that can help facilitate those discussions at, uh, the site plan approval stage. It's really where the community kind of comes in, uh, and, and, and points out all the, the, the kind of fine-tuned details, uh, when, you know, flushing that out. So I, I do understand in terms of glossing over, you want to ensure that, uh, it is addressed. Uh, and I, I, I completely agree. I, I would say this, if at any point, um, during, uh, you know, during the construction phase, where, w- whether it's a fence or it's anything, there's a safety-related matter, reach out to the building, uh, examiner. They will, they have, like, they, they can't produce anything that would create, uh, a safety, uh, hazard. Certainly, uh, nothing that the building code would, uh, otherwise, um, flag or not allow.
Well, as a three-sided neighbor, we're kept in the dark about everything. And it's up to us to kind of hunt and peck and look through all the site and find the right number and call three one one, which isn't always direct and all the rest of that. Is there any way that within the building department, the approval, et cetera, there can be a listing of exactly what you said, when it, this is the stage it goes through, when you have concerns, call this number. If this is such and such, then call this number.
Yeah, I, I would, I would be proactive, reach out to the planner that's assigned, let him know your concerns in advance before they get through to the application. But also realize, once, uh, once a permit is approved,
Yep.
it has been reviewed by somebody specifically for building code, not zoning, zoning separate. Um, and if there's still concerns, even after the city has issued an approval, you can always raise that with the building, uh, inspector. It's going to be a while before they, uh, from they start construction to the point at which the building is completed and they sign off. So there's a, there's a big window there, uh, for area residents to reach out, should they find that anything, uh, was constructed that may create a hazard or, or a safety, uh, concern.
Well, I mean, I was surprised to hear it went from a concrete structure to, uh, wood frame structure. And I'm thinking, hmm, what about fire? Pretty close to our building.
Yeah.
But also pretty close to the gas lines, too.
Yeah, yeah, it's all building code. Cause I, and I'm not, as much as I, I, some of us have a background in building, uh, construction on the committee, we're not,
And many, and many of us don't.
Yeah, well, many, yeah, and, and, but even, even for those of us that do have experience in building construction, we are not considered experts. We have to rely on, uh, the inspectors at Toronto Building, uh, and the examiners, uh, that will review specifically for building code, uh, related matters. Okay, I hope that helps.
It does. Um, I find your explanations very helpful and thank you for kind of lifting the cloud around a lot of this mystery.
No, of course, I, we've, we've all been there. We're all residents of the city. I think we've all shared similar concerns at one point or another in our lives.
Well, and we will be living with whatever's created forever.
Right.
So it's not just a matter of tick, 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 collect a check and run. We live with what it's created.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I, I am going to go back, uh, to Mr. Jacobs. Uh, thank you very much, uh, for, uh, I know we, we jumped a little bit out of, uh, procedure there. Um, we should have heard from, uh, the second, uh, resident, uh, before your submission, but I, I do want to provide you another opportunity, uh, to respond, uh, should, should you wish to, uh, some of those concerns.
Uh, thank you, and through the chair, I just had a, took a chance to actually look at the landscape plans just to confirm what the proposed fences are. Um, so a portion along the east side is, is a four-foot fence, kind of adjacent to where the, always the original amenity area is. Um, as you head towards the back or through the north of the site, it increases to six feet.
Okay.
And then along the nor- the rear property line, it is si- a six-foot or one point eight meter privacy fence. And all fences are constructed at the finished grade of the, on the site. So it would, it, there wouldn't be any, it wouldn't be constructed lower and then our, you know, walkways are above the bottom of the fence. So it's-
Okay.
Bottom of the fence would be constructed at walkway level.
So, so just so I understand, to clarify, the fences, uh, beyond just serving as a, a form of privacy, uh, to, to, to help with privacy, they're actually also a guard because there's a change in the, the grade between one property and another. Is that safe to say?
Correct. There, I think, as you go from the front to the rear of the property, where we, and on the east side, there's a walkway to get to the outdoor amenity area in the rear of the building, there's a bit of an increase.
Okay.
Um, a slope, but it's, all guards and, and railings are, as noted, o- to OBC.
Yeah, I don't suspect you'll be getting a building permit unless the, uh, examiner were satisfied that, uh, there weren't any, uh, sort of safety issues. But I, I would say this, um, having gone through this process, um, I mean, take it, uh, take it, um, take it to your advantage to know that the neighbors are concerned, uh, specifically about that and just, i- i- if you, you can, um, if and when this, uh, goes to, uh, be built, uh, just have that in mind. Uh, that, that they are concerned about that. Um, at the end of the day, she, uh, she said, you know, they have to live with the building, you guys have to live with the neighbors too and, uh, you know, for, it goes for everybody. You, you really want to, you really want to make peace with your, uh, your neighbors and ensure that, you know, everybody gets along. Um, I don't think it's too much to ask, uh, to just ensure a safety, um, uh, measure there.
No, no, I do appreciate those comments and definitely take it back to the owners and then, and the construction companies and, um, ultimately whoever's there in the future.
Okay, very well. Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, let's take this into committee. Yes, Mr. Magieri.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, um, I'm looking at the application. I think it's, um, straightforward to me. Uh, I don't have any concern, it's supportable. I said, the, the variances, uh, clearly meet the four tests, so I'm ready to make a motion if my colleagues don't have any for the comment.
Okay.
So I put forward a motion to approve this application, and I don't see any condition, uh, by planning or any other stuff.
Okay, uh, that's second by Ms. Sincar Peralta. Okay, uh, all in favor? Okay, um, and we'll have, uh, Mr. Allison as opposed on the, uh, record. Okay. All right, uh, so that application, uh, is approved. Uh, let's take a five-minute relief break, uh, two fifty-eight, uh, we'll be back at, uh, just after three oh three, uh, PM. Thank you. All right, we are back. We are on item number fourteen. Eighty-seven Hillmount Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling. Variances include east and west side dirt setbacks, number of stories, lot coverage, number of platforms on a rear main wall, platform area, building length and building depth on file material from the applicant. Uh, report from community planning, uh, urban forestry memo, and a letter, uh, in support from one hundred Hillmount. All right, uh, we got our agent with us.
Good afternoon, this is Jim Pfeffer from ninety-five St. Clair Avenue West.
Welcome back, Mr. Pfeffer.
Yeah, before I, uh, we get started, can I just outline some changes that we've made to this application, uh, in response to, or in discussions with community planning?
Yes, please. Take us through the public notice if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure. So variance number five for lot coverage, instead of forty-three point nine percent, that's going to be forty-two percent.
Okay.
We've reduced lot coverage by reducing the length and depth of the building, so variance number eight for length is going to be twenty-eight point nine one meters. So that's variance eight, instead of twenty-three point, or twenty-nine point four two becomes twenty-eight point nine one. And variance nine for depth becomes twenty-three point five seven. So we had discussed these changes with, uh, community planning, and with these changes to the coverage and the length and depth, they didn't have any concern with those, uh, variances anymore because they did have concerns that were discussed in their report. But these changes, uh, we discussed this with them and those, these changes address the concerns with length, depth, and coverage.
Okay, Mr. Pfeffer, did you have, because I'm looking at the staff report, uh, from community planning and they're recommending refusal. I don't have, uh, anything, um, that kind of notes there was a discussion for a modified variance, uh, that they would be happy with?
Yeah, that's, you know, that's a funny one, uh, because we did have discussions with them, and as a matter of fact, I've got an email from the planner here uh, that says, you know, I'd like to see the coverage, uh, closer to forty-two percent, which is what he saw in the neighborhood. And we had sent in a revised plan. Uh, I sent in a letter to the community or to, to, uh, the committee saying we intend to make these changes and, and that addresses the concerns of, of the planner. And I've called the planner a couple of times, uh, today, yesterday, uh, earlier this week to say, I saw your report, uh, can you let me know what's going on? And I haven't got it in a call back, but I have, you know, I've got it in writing from the planner that forty-two percent, uh, coverage, uh, was what they were looking for. Uh, that was per our discussions with them. Uh, so I don't know why that isn't reflected in this report. But I'm also just happy to discuss the merits of that number with the committee.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that is your, that is your choice. I, Mr. Pfeffer, I know you're, you're, uh, you're experienced, uh, with the committee. Um, I, uh, I, I'll be honest, I, I don't really know what my colleagues, uh, think. I, I, um, you know, it isn't, it is, you're, you're an option if, if you are, if you, if you feel that, you know, um, a confirmation from, uh, the planner um, might help, um, you know, you do have the option of requesting a deferral. Uh, but, uh, by the same token, you know, uh, we can also, we're happy to, uh, proceed with what's in front of us and, and, and have you, uh, provide us some planning rationale, uh, for that. But, um, I, I just wanted to put that out there for you.
Oh, happy to proceed, and I think Ms. Sandikar has her hand up, so.
Oh, yes.
Maybe, maybe there's a question there.
Yes, Ms. Ms. Peralta, uh, please.
Yeah, thank you. I, you know, um, I know Mr. Pfeffer probably worked really hard on, on getting this together, but just from me reading through and reviewing the application and looking at everything, um, I, I am concerned about this staff report and I just feel that he may have merit in the sense that he's got that email, et cetera, but no one's forwarded that to us. And it's, it's pretty clear about the recommendation of refusal of those variances, not, not just lowering them. And so at this time, I'm not sort of open to changing that because I haven't seen something differently to show me that. So I was actually going to suggest, Mr. Chair, that if he wants to sort of take this away and we defer it, like, that's just a suggestion. My colleagues may not agree, but I would think that if he could get some of that in writing or some, work, work through that with them so that they can write a different report or even an email, uh, as to what they would accept, um, I think that would be more helpful.
Sure, let's, um, uh, Mr. Fazali.
Uh, through message, I tend to agree with my colleague.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, Mr. Pfeffer, I'm gonna take it back to you. It's, I, it's, um, it's not every day, uh, you know, we get sort of an indication of, uh, concern from our, our panel members. Um, I, I will, I will leave, the decision is ultimately with you as the agent, uh, for this application. Um, uh, how, how would you like to, uh, proceed on this item?
Uh, well, you know, I, I've presented the, the kind of facts, as I know them, that we have had this discussion with the planning and I've told you, you know, what, what, wha- what those discussions are and I think you can weigh that however you want. But I, I think this application does kind of stand on its merits, so I think we can just go ahead.
Okay, very well, very well. Okay, we will, we will proceed on that. Okay. I guess, Mr. Pfeffer, I, you know, in terms of procedure, I would, I know we've had some discussion on this, but we haven't had a formal presentation. So I would, would ask, we'll get, staff get the clock up and I, I do want to give you the floor to provide us any comment in addition to what we've already discussed, should you wish.
Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt. Before Mr. Pfeffer starts, can I just ask staff to pull up the revised? So there, there's a memo, I think it's, I think the year is wrong, it's dated twenty fifteen, but if you go down and notes variance eight is a little different than what was stated. I just, just want to clarify. Or if Mr. Pfeffer can provide clarification.
Yeah, so that, that's a typo there. What we had discussed with staff was reducing, you know, the projection of the building at the back. And as we'll discuss as we go ahead, the length is all, there's a contribution to the length in front of the building because underneath only the driveway, there's a projection of the garage. And I think that has some very positive aspects to the streetscape, but that contributes to the length. So we discussed with the planner, reducing the depth of the building at the back to reduce the lot coverage. Of course, that length underground does not contribute to lot coverage and the planner in their report specifically calls out this underground length not being a concern. Like, if you want to take a look at the planning reports, in particular, they, they say in the second paragraph in the second page of the planning report, they say, "The area where the building length and depth are greatest is located below grade where no negative impacts are expected." So the difference between the length and the depth is entirely below grade and it's also entirely below the driveway. So it's not a contribution of hardscape because the driveway is hardscape. Notwithstanding, and the planner specifically says here that that's not, that is not a concern. So the only difference between length and depth is a projection to the front underground and entirely under the driveway footprint. And, and the planner here mentioned that that wasn't a concern. So thanks, Simon, for pointing that out.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So what would be the number then? Variance number eight, what is the number that the applicant is requesting?
Twenty-eight point nine one. Mr. Pfeffer, is that correct?
That is, twenty-eight point nine one, correct.
So the one that we just can see where it says twenty-three point five seven, that is not relevant?
That's right.
All right. Okay, any questions at this time from Mr. Pfeffer?
I did have, I had a presentation booklet, if you want me to just walk through that.
Yeah, no, sir, I didn't know if you wanted a more formal, but, but please, please, the, the floor is yours.
Absolutely. So taking a look at this front elevation, as I said, per our discussions with the planner, they didn't have concerns about length, depth, or coverage following our conversations. According to my understanding of that conversation, the remaining concern that they expressed was about the height. And looking at this front elevation, I'd particularly like to call out to you that it presents as two stories with a pitched roof to the street. There is an attic story, but it doesn't present at all to the street and it actually has very little presence on the side or back of the buildings as well. The planner in their report suggested, should you approve the variances, you tie the approval to the side elevations. I'm also suggesting that you may want to tie it to the site plan. I would be happy to accept those conditions. And another thing I want to point out about this facade, which is true of a lot of the designs that we have, is that you can see we've really made an effort to minimize the presence of the garage drawer on the street. You'd barely be able to tell it was there. In part, that's because we have that underground projection of a below-grade garage here, which I think is a very beneficial thing, which creates that length variance that we just talked about. Moving on to the next page, you can see our projection of the building in length, both in the front and in the back, is less than ninety-one Hillmount immediately to the west. We're a little bit longer in the back than eighty-five Hillmount. That neighbor has no objections. These are hundred-and-forty-foot-deep lots facing to the back, other hundred-and-forty-feet-deep lots. So the client is building this house in a location where it is appropriate to have. You can see we've got a third-story balcony that is immediately beside the brick wall at ninety-one Hillmount and is very well screened and views to the south and west from that, you know, structure there. There's a neighbor to the south and west who has objected about overlook in a late letter. You know, there, there isn't a concern because of that. And also eighty-five Hillmount has a tree on their own property which screens any overlook from either one of these balconies to their rear yard amenity area. Moving on to the next page, you'll see this block in aerial view very eclectic in terms of the front yard setback, the extension to the rear. But what you'll find is that our building isn't an outlier in either one. Our extension of the building to the back absolutely not an outlier on this block compared to, say, ninety-nine, the building immediately to the west, ninety-one, or eighty-three Hillmounts. You know, we're very much in keeping with the patterns of open space on this block. Moving on to the next page, that house to the immediate west, this is our house beside that house, and our proposal is three-point-two meters shorter than that house. So notwithstanding the fact that we need a small height variance, we're absolutely creating a transition from that very tall house to the neighborhood. Our house is also in keeping with other houses in the neighborhood. On the next page, you can see that tall house to the west. Our third-floor balcony will be beside that brick wall. Another way which we're trying to be sensitive, you can see that porch behind this house. We have a rear yard terrace which is going to be fully one meter below the height of that porch. Also lower than the porch of the house to the east. So the way we're doing this is very sensitive to minimize any impact to that extra length. You can lock that in by tying this to the site plan. The next page, you can see some other very tall buildings on this street, including the house immediately to the west and ninety-seven Hillmount, which was approved by this committee with a midpoint variance of nine-point-five meters. We're gonna be shorter than that because you can clearly tell that that's higher than eleven meters if it's nine-point-five at the midpoint. Finally, on the next page, the very prevalent building type along this block is two full stories above a garage. Our office has studied this type of building. I'm happy to go into more detail about that. But this type of house, which used to enjoy an eight-point-eight-meter midpoint permission, is very often up to or exceeding eleven meters. Happy to discuss that. I myself am very familiar with this block. Our office has done other projects along this block and I'm very confident that we are not going to be an outlier on height. If you want to take a look at the next page, you'll see some examples of narrow sideyard setbacks in this neighborhood. We're also asking for a sideyard setback, which is completely within the prevailing character of this block. I think that's five minutes.
All right. Yes, thank you. Questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. All right, we have a, we have a neighbor as well. Mr. Per, Perlmutter.
Mr. Perlmutter, you are muted. Hello? Mr. Edward Perlmutter, you are unmuted, so you can speak.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello. Something is skewed here.
Yes, we can hear you. Your name and address when you get a chance, please.
Hi, Edward Perlmutter. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. It's not going through my earphone, my headset, so hopefully it'll work through the computer. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm, we're neighbors at the, at the back one over fifty feet away. We're behind the, behind, we're at the back of the property on the map. It's with the, with the notice. It's the one to the west of one oh six Viamont. And I was, I actually only got real notice of this on Monday afternoon by the, by mail. I did notice later there's a very small sign in the middle of the, front of the house. Yeah, in question, you have to walk onto the property to read it. It's tiny. So I only got real notice when I got the paper notice in the mail, which was delayed. So I've done what I can. In short, I just had a concern. I raised it in the email. I appreciate it being accepted. Although as fast as I could, it was past the deadline. I believe that's what you have on the screen. But I don't want to take the time of the committee to reread it just to highlight that the primary concern is one of privacy. There's already a very high house as was notified by Mr. Pfeffer. I believe it's a common ownership between the two properties by Mr. Strauss and, or between the two properties. And it's an exceedance variance to make it higher than permitted. And this was concerned about the privacy and looking down on our patio and pool. We already have a problem from the other house that Mr. Pfeffer referred to, to the west on Hillmount, which on its third-floor balcony, which from the back of the property is really a fourth floor from the elevation, looks down and I just, we just fear there'll be a similar now on both sides. And I thought I heard in passing a comment to measure the height from the elevation. And that would be something that sounds good to me because that was the problem on the other house because it's a downward slope from the front. And if you measure the elevation only from the front, it's much shorter than from the back. The other, that I, I did hear as well, there was what seemed to me to be an immaterial variance in the planning process on the, on some of these measurements. But it's still above what was permitted for the height. The lesser concern, but it's still mentioned in my email, is number two, that's the building depth. I'm less concerned at the personal level because I'm not right behind it. But, you know, but the committee, of course, has to take the larger view of what's good, as a matter of good planning policy as opposed to how it affects any particular neighbor at this particular point. I do think it's massive, but my primary concern is the, the height. The other question I would just have is whether there's been any, is there going to be any subterranean work being done? We heard of another house in south of us, not on Hillmount or Viamont, where they're putting in a subterranean or a parking garage elevator? Is that in the works? I just asked you whether that's something that's being proposed here that may affect subterranean water flow? Or is it just going to be the normal excavation or a, you know, a normal basement? And those, that's really, that's really it.
Okay.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Perlmutter. I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they have any questions for you. Okay, I'm seeing none. All right, I'd like to go back to Mr. Pfeffer and I, I would like to hear from him, provide him an opportunity to respond to some of the concerns that were raised by Mr. Perlmutter. Particularly some concern with respect to drainage, building length and depth. I'm sure Mr. Pfeffer's been taking notes, so turn it over to, turn it over to him.
Yeah, absolutely. So maybe if you can just go to page two of the presentation because I, I think the primary concern I heard expressed was about overlook. So, oh, page two, page two, go down, go down. So to the, to the site plan we have. The site plan, yeah. So he, he was concerned about overlook. So you can see in the bottom left-hand corner of this image, that's where our third-floor balcony is. And that you can see, as I mentioned before, is right beside the brick wall of ninety-one Hillmount Avenue. So that effectively provides screening. And then our, our, we do have a second-floor balcony which is kind of lower down. And also in terms of drainage, you know, you can see we've actually got a pretty open backyard and as I mentioned, that patio at the back, that's a full meter down from where the existing porch is behind the house. And there's a lot of green space at the back. He did ask, is there subterranean construction underneath the driveway and underneath the driveway only to the front? There's no basement underneath any of this terrace in the back. So going on to the, and also what we're here, I'll point out, you know, there's lot coverage we're seeking for, not an outlier. Forty-three point seven percent is at ninety-seven Hillmount, just a couple of blocks away. Forty-one point nine. Further in this booklet, we list a number of other precedents. Going down to the aerial view on the next page, imagining where that third-floor balcony is in this footprint of the house. Mr. Perlmutter's house is a hundred-and-twelve and that's the house below and then two to the left. So you can see, just speaking of drainage, that his entire rear yard, with the exception of the pool, is hardscape. So he's not going to be affected. Well, suffice to say, you know, drainage on this hundred-and-forty-foot-deep lot not going to be concerned. We've got lots of space for absorption of green space and you can also see where that balcony is, you know, it's beside that very deep house to the immediate west of this house. So that is going to be, you know, sort of blocking overlook. There's also, you know, a full lot between our house and his house. And you can see he's got a tree in his northeast corner. But also go two more sheets down and you can see the, the rear yard views that I had mentioned. And two more sheets down, you'll see that really tall brick wall of ninety-one Hillmount immediately to the west, Mr. Perlmutter's side. Our balcony is going to be sat beside that, which is going to be providing screening. You can also see there is a balcony there already at the third floor. It's larger than what we're proposing. So, you know, just in terms of the character of the neighbor and, you know, like I said, we're coming down a full meter with that porch is coming down to our, our terrace is going to be at the grade there. So, you know, in terms of drainage, absolutely not a concern. Yes, we've got a projection to the front of the house. Overlook, you know, we're a very long distance from his house. The lot coverage, not an outlier. This hundred-and-forty-feet-deep lot provides ample space for water absorption and we don't have a lot of hardscape in the rear yard. So that also is going to improve the permeability of this lot. So I think that addresses, oh, and he talked about the sign. Take a look at our sign posting photo. We posted well before the deadline. And then actually we went back to the site on the Thanksgiving weekend to move the sign right to the front of the lot and put it on a post. So very close to, there is no sidewalk here, close to the street. So we, we came back to move that sign forward because of the mail strike, because of discussions we had with the committee to make sure it was visible from being right at the road. So the sign posting, absolutely, we tried to make that as visible as possible.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Questions? All right, let's take this into committee now. Yes, Ms. Sankar Peralta.
Yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Chair, you know, and I don't know how other members feel, but I just feel that having gone through this, you know, all the explanations provided, and I wasn't too concerned about some of the concerns of the person who came in to speak. But I still didn't get a sense of, um, for me, how that, this doesn't seem minor. So I, I don't know if it's just me, but I, I don't feel that it seems minor. And I felt that the staff report really did talk to something that I am very concerned about. Um, and so I, I, and that went into extreme explanations, which, um, I feel wasn't a, a, any sort of counter, um, arguments, um, really helped me understand better that I should make a decision. Um, you know, in another direction. So I'm still of the feeling of, um, respecting the staff report at this point in time. Um, and so if I were to approve this, it would be with that in conjunction. I'm not willing to do or put forward a deferral anymore because we have heard the application. Um, so that's just my view.
Yes, Mr. Mercier.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Ms. Sankar and also, uh, my other colleagues. I think, uh, um, the numbers especially, I, I am fine with the building height, uh, as per applicant's explanation. I think the roof shape and, uh, um, the arrangement of the massing, um, it mitigates the height. But I think variance five, eight, and nine, those are big numbers. And when we have that, those big numbers, I know the applicant is changing, uh, those, but those are minor changes. And when those are happening on the floor, I, I'd, I'd like to see staff support for that. I can't, uh, I can't support this when I don't see the staff support. I, I take, uh, Mr. Vefter's, uh, word for that. But, uh, I was hoping he asked for deferral, but I cannot support this application with the staff report we had in, in front of us.
Yes, I, I tend to agree, same.
I provide some, just very briefly, um, I, I was concerned with the length and depth. I, I disagree with the staff report. Um, just because I, you know, I'm tracing the footprint of the building above grade. I'm looking at the one-story extension bump out. I look at it in comparison to the immediate property on both sides and it's actually, I, you, you know, it's, it's actually shorter than ninety-one Hillmount, which is also relatively newer, uh, build. I, I, I think it, from what I understand correctly, I mean, initially I thought, you know, the outdoor dining area and the seating area and all those, um, kind of terrace structures on the back were part of the basement, but they're not. So that the building itself only goes back to the bump out, that rear story one, that one-story extension, um, in the basement. I, I, I think what's driving those numbers up because, um, well, I might disagree with, um, the community planning staff report, certainly on the, the number from a qualitative standpoint. Um, I, I do agree, uh, with my colleagues that, um, certain, certainly from a quantitative standpoint, it is just a high number. Um, I, I think it's coming, I, I mean, and it's really stemming from that underground parking, uh, space in the backyard, which drives up the, you know, that one variance, uh, over the other, but.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. I just think that this, um, has to be, it's not mature enough. I mean, like, it has to go through staff and get the staff support. That's what I'm saying. I agree with you. I can read the plans, uh, completely. I understand that the, the, the building length and depth, uh, is, is being applied to the uh, extension of the garage at the front and also, um, the, the one-story addition at the back. But I, I think, uh, I understand that we already proposed a deferral, but I don't know if we can go back to the applicant, because I cannot, uh, support it with the staff.
Yeah, no, I think at this time, I'm, I'm, I'm not in support of the deferral just because we've heard the application. Yeah, I mean, I, I will, uh, I, 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 I respect, uh, you know, my colleagues', uh, viewpoints on this. Um, I, I think also what threw me is, I, 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 I think what threw me too is in the staff report, it specifically notes that the length and depth are contributing to, um, massing issues because it's all subterranean. So then the next thing I go to is I say, okay, well, is there any soft landscaping variances? Are they right, like, front or back? There's none. Um, is it a healthy amount of landscape, I think, in comparison, certainly to the neighbors' yards? Um, so I, I don't know. It's sort of where I land on it. But I, I think going into this, I, uh, I, you know, I did have some red flags with the, the community planning report. But, um, I, I could see why Mr. Vefter was confident to proceed. Um, I, I, I'm not sure I would have made a different decision in his shoes, um, but, you know, you, you never know which way these things, uh, will go. So, um, I will say this, there's, there's four of us, so, um, I'm outnumbered. Maybe, maybe a motion, um, but I, I.
I, as I said, I don't want to refuse it.
Yeah.
But, uh, uh, I think I would, I would vote to defer it. I don't know. It's just, uh, I think it would be an easy application when we have the staff, uh, support, uh, behind it.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, yes, Ms. Sankar Peralta.
No, I'm ready for a motion, but I do want to say that every, uh, every application, uh, should be looked at on its own accord and merit and not just sort of like what the neighbor has or whatever, because it's in its totality that we are, um, made to make a decision on that in front of us.
Yeah, fair enough.
Itself. And I didn't feel that there was enough that was shown that this was sort of the character of the neighborhood, uh, to, as well. Um, so there's that as well. Um, having, um, knowing that this is an area of strength for specific uh, skilled expertise from planners that would be able to, uh, provide us, especially those of us who, uh, maybe don't have as strong a planning background or things like that, for us to pay attention to things. I think it is a flag when community staff reports say something. Um, and, and not all the time that we take that into consideration. You know, sometimes there are real, really like blatant, um, uh, considerations where we're thinking, maybe, maybe I will go a different direction. But in this one, I don't feel for this application that assured. And that if, if I, I have doubt and knowing that if all of these conversations that take place with staff report, normally they would send a quick email. We've seen them send emails on the day off. You know, saying, here's what we're really now thinking. Um, we haven't seen any such emails. And as such, um, we've heard the application and I'm willing to approve the application. I'm going to motion to approve it, but I'm going to also make it subject to forestry and subject to the, um, community staff planning report of October sixteenth, where variance number three, five, eight, and nine are refused. And that the variance number eight and nine relating to the building length and depth be developed substantially in accordance with the east-left side elevation drawing submitted to the, the committee. And that's my motion.
Yeah, just a quick clarification. Uh, so I, if we're going to refuse the length and depth, I don't think we need to tie it to the, uh, substantially in accordance with the elevations.
Sorry, my mistake. I'll remove that last part. So I'm just going to go ahead and refuse these.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, on the floor by Ms. Sankar Peralta. Uh, that's, uh, second by Mr. Fazeli. Refuse three, five, eight, nine, as well as urban forestry, uh, condition. Okay, uh, that's second, uh, by Mr. Fazeli. All in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, and for the record, uh, just so everybody understands, uh, where there is a possibility of a tie, uh, the chair cannot vote. So I, I won't be voting on this one. Uh, therefore, uh, the motion, uh, passes, the motion succeeds, uh, the application is approved in part, uh, with, uh, condition. Okay? All right. We are on item number fifteen now. Thirty-four Mildenhall Road. Purpose of this application is to legalize and maintain the existing landscape conditions. One variance, uh, before us for rear yard landscaping, soft landscaping, I should say. Uh, on file, uh, material from the applicant. Do we have our agent or applicant with us?
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, hi, uh, my name is Nadeem Ismaili and, uh, I am the, um, authorized agent for this property.
Okay.
Uh, can I, uh, yeah, can I speak of?
You, you can, but before you get going, um, I, uh, I've reviewed the package and I'm, I was unable to locate your, uh, site plan, at least a site plan that is, uh, reflective of your as-built condition. Uh, was there ever a site plan submitted in this application?
Yes, indeed. We had submitted the, uh, the site plan.
Can you point us to that site plan? Maybe staff can pull that up, look at that together.
Yeah, can you go down a little bit, slightly down?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm actually.
I, I have an existing site plan. Dated June eleven.
Is it covered with, uh, completely with the grass?
That's right.
No, we had, uh, submitted the updated site plan, which has a tennis court reflecting at this, um, at the backyard. And, uh, the soft, uh, landscape which we kept, um, maintained there.
Of course, okay. We're gonna ask, we're gonna try to track this down. It's just, I'm gonna ask staff to, uh, see if perhaps that site plan, um, was, uh, omitted, uh, from our file. If it's, I'd like to know if it's, uh, on the public file at least. Do you know, do you happen to know when you may have, uh, submitted that, uh, site plan to staff?
Um, um, no worries. I, I have to check my email.
Okay.
If you, uh, give me a second, please.
Yes, of course.
I'm still finding, I'm sorry for that.
Nope, that's okay. I think staff are, uh, checking as well.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not finding it. Uh, actually, my emails are, um, on, on the computer, desktop computer, and, uh, I'm on the road at the moment.
Okay, um, I'm gonna ask staff, um, do, do we have any confirmation that, uh, maybe the site plan was missed?
Through you, Mr. Chair. From what we can see on our system, there is no updated site plan other than what you see there.
Okay.
But if you give us a couple of minutes, we'll try to look a little bit more.
Sure.
But again, if the applicant, I know the applicant has a difficult situation. If, if they can find that email somewhere somehow, um, while we continue to look, that would be helpful as well.
Of course. Um, why don't we stand this item down? I wanna, I don't want to put anybody on the spot. Um, I want to provide some time to get this sorted. So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand this item down. Um, we'll come back to it, uh, very shortly. But, uh, please take the time, uh, to, uh, figure out, uh, where that site plan is. Okay, uh, let's jump to item sixteen, fifty-seven Dever Gardens. Purpose of this application. File open here. Okay, to construct a new two-story dwelling with a rear deck, variances, rear platform, uh, setback from a north side lot line, south, uh, as well as rear platform setback from a south side lot line, platform encroachment as it relates to height, north side yard setback, south side yard setback, building depth, lot coverage, length, height, platform area, one variance for, uh, front, side, and rear main wall heights and another for parapet height. On file material from the applicant, memo from urban forestry, community planning, and, uh, some letters in support, some letters in objection. Okay, we have our agent or applicant with us.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Joel Gerber of twenty-three Doncaster.
Welcome. Uh, all right, sir, I'm gonna ask for a presentation from you. We'll get the five minutes up and, uh, whenever you're ready.
Wonderful. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for your time and consideration. We will endeavor to keep the presentation brief, respecting your time today. Uh, while there are, um, what seems like a lot of variances before you, some of them are overlapping. And I'll attempt to give justification to some of the design decisions that were made. We did obtain, uh, about a hundred and fifty-something recent or past decision, sorry, that we use to kind of analyze with our friends, uh, helping in the AI world to make sure that there was no extreme variances or that the cumulative, um, uh, proposal wasn't beyond what's already been approved in the past. So we're quite confident from that kind of historical backing perspective. Uh, so to jump in to the explanations, um, the goal of the project regarding the side yard setback was to preserve a landscape rear yard for the children to play in to provide a deck area, uh, large enough to host the family. We, we did reduce the overall length of the building, uh, but then added some back to the width with the goal of preserving the code minimum setbacks for side yard windows. That was kind of what our justification was for the side yard. We were very adamant not to propose any soft landscaping variances at either the front or the rear yard. The second item was the, um, the rear deck and the deck height, which was a byproduct of, um, really the garage and getting the ground floor, uh, very similar to the recent build at seventy-three Dever, uh, where the ground floor is in fact above the garage. So we compromised the garage clear height, but it allows for an uninterrupted, um, ground floor space, um, for the family. Therefore, the rear deck height and setback was kind of pegged off of the main building and, and that was while minor, that's, you know, what, what drew those variances to, to be established. The third item that I wanted to speak to that we're very proud of was the balcony. You'll notice in the, the staff support, which had a positive, um, uh, positive conclusion for our project, that we did collaborate with the community planner quite intensely. And, uh, we addressed their concern for privacy and significantly reduced the second floor, uh, balcony from eleven meters down to six, uh, at their recommendation.
Okay, I'm gonna pause there. So, um, we have some modifications to the public notice?
Oh, yes, please, go ahead, sorry.
Yes, I, I, just so you know, I've, I've paused, uh, your time there. I just want to confirm, um, is there any modifications, uh, to the public notice, uh, that you'd like to make, uh, on the floor? I, I did, I did hear that you reduced the area of the second floor platform, which I believe is variance number ten?
Yes, correct. Y- y- yeah, exactly what's in front of you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's go through. Okay, let's go through, take us through, if, if there's any variances in the order on the public notice, let us know which variances you'd like to modify.
Yeah, just, as per the staff report, only, only number 10 is, is kind of, what, what you see with this revised notice has already kind of dealt with some of the iterations that we've gone through. So, the notice in front of you is, is the most current notice, with the exception of number 10,
Okay.
which we didn't have the opportunity kind of meet with the community planner till fairly late, later on in the, in the committee process. So, that was the only one that kind of snuck through the, the cracks on us.
Okay, so variance number 10 is being modified from 11.5, sorry, 11.15 meters square to 6.3 meters square? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and just so everybody knows, that is in line with the recommendations noted in the community planning staff report. Okay. Go on, my apologies for interrupting.
No, no, thank, thank you for the clarification. I, I, I should have done that maybe more succinctly. And then, yeah, the last, the last kind of piece was simply to address the, the, the main wall height and the parapet height. So, the, the building heights for this project had gone back and forth a couple of times, collaborating with both, you know, the client team and the plans examiner to, to sculpt a mansard roof that was both appropriate to the design objectives as well as tied into the neighborhood. And unfortunately, while we had reduced the overall building height, it kind of took, you know, a mansard roof is both a low sloping flat roof as well as a steep side kind of apron around the perimeter. And by reducing the overall building height, it put 50% of our roof as what's by definition a low sloping roof of less than 1 in 10. So that kind of forced the plans examiner to review our files a flat roof actually, not as a, as a slope roof. So, I guess giving some justification of why the height seems a little bit extreme. The intent was that the overall aesthetic and height of the roof is in line with other large two-story new builds in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to kind of draw attention to that, that on paper it seems like a very big number, but, but in fact, when you look at the, the building elevations, it, it, it ties fairly consistently across, you know, what we would define as new builds in, in the area. And that kind of concludes my presentation. I'd be more than happy, I guess, to address the neighbors' comments. You know, two, two of the neighbors, I guess, had very, very similar comments and I'm more than happy to, to speak to those. If there's any additional questions that they may have that I didn't answer in my presentation. So, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Do you have an updated site plan drawing with the revised platform area?
Yes, it was, it was sent to the community planner. I'd be happy to kind of send that, send that in as well.
Okay, we'll ask, actually, maybe staff can pull that up. I just wanna make sure everybody's looking at the most, the latest version.
I believe it was sent on October the 14th or 15th.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe they did not send it to us. They sent it to the community planning because we have only one version of the plans, if I'm honest.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have...
That could have been...
Revised version? Did you send it to community, to planning or to committee of adjustment staff?
It, it's a very good question. My, my guess is that we might have simply sent it to, to, to the community planner and, and not to, not to the city planning more generally. I'm just trying to find that email while we're talking here. I guess while we're looking, I'm wondering, can that, like, as noted in the, in the staff report, is that something that can be tied to, to the, to the project?
Well, I do see a site plan in the staff report, but I, is that site plan up to date? Is the question that I have for you. It's dated...
Oh, yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I do, I do, we do have attachment of a site plan in the community planning report, but I'm not sure that it's up to date.
Yeah, if you look, if you scroll down, I think I saw that there was a bubbled, on the next page, there was a bubbled elevation. I think that was to, to emphasize the, the revision to reduce that balcony size.
Okay.
So maybe he's screen, he screenshot from the most current package we sent, yes.
Okay, so the reduction in the balcony size that pertains to variance number 10, that is the balcony on the uppermost floor. There's, there's no alteration then to the balcony on the below, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, understood, understood. Just bear with us, staff are trying to get a hold of another party that may speak to this item.
No problem.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we, the other person that is online, he can speak, we don't, we're not looking for him, we're waiting for you for confirmation. I thought you were still...
Oh, no, no. We were, we were waiting for an answer to see if there was an updated site plan, but I don't think we have one. So, I think the closest thing we have is the, the attachment in the community planning report. So I just wanted to get around with you guys. Okay, let's hear from our, our next speaker.
I've just been unmuted. Hello, you may have unmuted the incorrect person. I'm on here for...
Noak, I think I'm now unmuted.
Yes, your name and address, please?
Yes, David Noak, I'm 55 Devere Gardens. I'm in the, I joined property to the south.
Yes, yeah, I see that, okay.
So, look, I'd start by saying I'm, I'm very pro-development, so I have no issues with what, what the owner is trying to do. The, the only concern I had was, I'll say the awkwardness of the, the main or, or primary bedroom being extended out from the back of the house. And it just struck me as that was a way to just try and move the coverage around to maximize the bedroom. But, but to me, it seems a bit out, out of sorts with the neighborhood. We've got all these big homes going in, mine is one of them. They're all beautiful, they're clean lines, and then this just seemed like an awkward design out the back of the house. And, and we spend our, our summers in the backyard and our pool, so we'll be the ones looking up at it. That was the only concern that we had on our end.
Okay. Let me ask you. On your main level, at your rear, your rear exit, how roughly, how far above grade does your main level exit at the rear yard?
On our property?
Yes.
Or are you talking about the applicant?
No, on yours. I'm trying, I'm trying to understand the condition.
Probably, we're probably, I'm gonna say it's about four feet. So if I'm standing at my pool, I'm six feet tall. I, my, my head is above my back deck, so it's probably about four feet is the, is the rear door.
Okay, very good.
So, so to me, to me, the simple solution would be just to pull the bedroom back in line with the wall. That means they'd also extend the footprint out, I get that. You know, the coverage increase, about a 30% coverage increase, I get that. That's in line generally with what's going on in the neighborhood, probably consistent with our property. It was just the nature of how it extends out. And, and it's also one house so out from a, from a corner lot. We're the corner lot. And so everybody walking up and down the street with their dogs will see the back of this because they'll look through our backyard and, and it'll just seem very odd.
Okay, very well. Other questions for our immediate neighbor? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, staff, any other speakers on this item? All right, let's go back to Mr., Mr. Gerber?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can kind of speak to that and address it. The, the, the design intent for this house was to be a little bit unique in that it's, it's, it's quite, quite kind of transitional in its style from the street frontage, trying to be respectful of the neighborhood and has this kind of unique, what we, what we call a hybrid at the back, where it's a little bit more modern. Really, the justification from a planning perspective was, you can see in the site plan, the master bedroom does actually provide some, some canopy coverage for, for the deck space, which is always kind of a, of interest of ours when we, when we can to leave our structures and kind of create these, these beautiful moments, if you will. So, aside from a stylization, that was really the only, in a, in a planning of, of sculpting the rear of the elevation so that if we squared everything off, we would have had a much bigger project. So it was kind of a playful sculpting of the building massing that led to the final design. And of course, with any style, there's always, you know, an opportunity to like it and an opportunity to maybe not like the style. But I would just kind of stick to, I guess, the, to the, to the script and, you know, while it's not necessarily, you know, part of the committee to, to, to discuss design too intensely, that was, that was really the justification of the, of the architecture.
Okay, and maybe you could, you could provide just a little bit of planning rationale with respect to the, the lower balcony that comes off the rear. I'll, I'll point this out. You know, I, I look at the neighbor on each side, both immediate neighbors, and it, it seems that their, their ground floor, while they both look like they are about the same height from the front, this steps up internally, if I'm not mistaken, and exits a lot higher at the rear. So that creates a bit of a condition whereby now you have this very large platform in the backyard that's elevated. Is there any, how, how would you, how do you plan to mitigate some of the sightlines that might be produced from that platform at the rear? Just given that both the neighbors don't have those types of platforms, they, they seem to exit more or less at grade, within four feet of grade?
Yeah, there, there, there is a slight, excuse me, there is a slight height increase because of, you know, like I explained with the garage. And I feel like one, one opportunity maybe to introduce, I mean, there are, is, there's also planned landscaping that will, that will help with some of that privacy and sightlines, as well as, there could be an opportunity maybe to provide some frosted, frosted glazing to assist with that privacy if that was of concern. You'll notice kind of in the site plan that the neighbors, the neighbor's house and deck is quite aligned. And I think that, 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 that's maybe one way to rationalize it. We could also consider maybe stepping down a portion of the platform. I'm not sure exactly how that would be worded, but we could potentially, you know, sculpt the, the, the levels of the platform to maybe come down sooner if that was of, of concern. I feel like the, you know, we, we would be willing to be quite flexible with the deck ultimately, in lieu of, you know, the main house. But I guess in our iteration with, with the community planner, it wasn't something that we kind of focused on that last minute or the last final step going into committee. So, but it's a, it's a fair, a fair, fair comment or note.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they have any questions. No? Okay, let's take this into committee. Yes, Mr. Majari?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I, 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 I think all the variances are supportable other than variance number three, as you, I, I agree with you. I think it's, the deck is pretty dominant at the back and I, I don't know how the neighbors feel, but to me, the variance number three is not supportable, but I don't have any difficulty with the other variances.
Yeah, I, this, just really briefly, I just, you know, this is a neighborhood that has got a lot of new builds, is clearly in transition. And I think the applicant, and, and, and then, on top of that, you know, these new builds typically are of a typology that is two stories. Now, there is, there are a couple of examples in the neighborhood where you have that, that walk-up whereby you have the garage and then two stories above that. And I will say, this application does a really good job of, of introducing that typology, but doing it in a way that's sensitive to the, certainly the fit on the streetscape side. It does, it does it through a few ways. One of them is that the main pedestrian entrance height, which is, is brought right down
Yes.
and, and is in line with neighbors on either side. Where I run into a bit of issue is, instead of just stepping up a portion above the garage, they've stepped up the entire ground floor, more or less, right? And that essentially now results in an exit of your main level that is elevated at a much different elevation at the rear than all of the other neighbors. Because the predominant typology in the neighborhood is one that doesn't have this walk-up with the garage. So, I see that and I, you know, I look at, you know, there's a number of variances related to this platform. It's a huge platform. I, I think there's some big oversight, non-look issues for the immediate neighbors, seeing as most of their programming is at grade. The solution that I would propose is, you know, this is where you need to have a smaller deck stepped down to a much larger deck.
Exactly, I think that would be a different...
As the applicant proposed, yeah.
I agree with you.
So, that's, I, I mean, other than that, it's a, I think it's a great act...
It is a, it is a great application. I had a bit of concern also with the length, but I can see how the architect align it with the, with the neighbor and extend it just the building from one side, which is aligned with the neighbor. So I don't have that concern with the, with the massive bedroom projection on second floor.
Neither do I, no. Well, because it's also technically behind the rear main wall of the adjacent dwelling. So it's sort of within...
Nice canopy for the deck. So I, I think that, that is supportable as well. So my only concern was with the variance number three that can be like architecturally reworked.
Sure, yeah.
Higher deck and lower deck.
I wonder too, as I got a little confused, there was an amendment to variance 10 for the, there's a deck, a level above that. I'm happy to see that reduction there. Frankly, I don't see variance for the area of that platform, at least the lower one, but I'm trying to.
No, I think the reason is actually that first floor is still considered first floor.
Okay.
So if the basement were considered as first floor, then they would have a problem with the platform area, but the area is fine, it's just the height that is a problem in creating variance number three.
Okay, I also wonder whether the other two variances for side yard setback of the platform are warranted, given the height kind of mass of it, whether that needs to be stepped back to the 1.8 meters. But I think we're along the same lines here, right? Yeah, those are my comments. I'll hear from any other members, if not, maybe a motion from Mr. Majari, if there's a way to address some of those comments that came out with respect to the platform.
So if my colleagues don't have any comment, I can make a motion and see how far it goes.
Sure, yeah.
So as I said, I put forward a motion to approve this application as amended, which is variance number 10, to be reduced to 6.3 square meter, and also I would refuse variance number three, and with inclusion of urban forestry condition.
Okay. Do I have a second or second by Ms. Sankar Peralta? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. That application is approved in part with condition. You had forestry condition on there? Yes, I heard you. Okay, with condition. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go back. Staff, did we get an answer on? Sure. Number 17. 40 Estershiner Boulevard, the purpose of the application is to request relief from the provisions of the former city of North York zoning bylaw number 7625, as amended by bylaw 959-2013 to facilitate the sharing of the non-residential and residential visitor parking spaces of the mixed-use development. Two variances before us related to parking, on file material from the applicant, as well as a report from transportation. We have our agent or applicant with us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, yep.
It's Sedanya Tomasella, counsel on behalf of Concord ADEX Investments Limited.
All right, I'm gonna ask my colleagues whether they would like a presentation on this item. Okay, I'm not seeing any heads. Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, may I just, I appreciate if the members don't require a presentation, but there was a very small typo on the notice that we noticed.
Okay, yep.
And I would just like to get that corrected for the eventual decision, please.
Sure, well, let us know what this, where the typo is.
Certainly. So if you, if you could, through you, Mr. Chairman, if you could just scroll up to variance number one, you'll see that there is Schedule 2, Section 1, which is the correct schedule and the correct schedule, but it refers to bylaw 569-2013. The bylaw, the site-specific bylaw number is 959-2013. And I think the fact that it is so closely written to 569, and the fact that I think staff is very commonly, you know, makes reference to 569, I think this may have just been a slip in the hand. But I have gone back to all the application materials, and everything has consistently made reference to 959, so it's just the issue with the notice.
Okay, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, any comment on the request to have that revised? I will say to the applicant, regardless of what it says on other material, we have to always go by the public hearing notice, as that's the official document that gets mailed out.
Understood. This was received two days ago, which is when we noticed it.
Yes, of course.
I just want to confirm through you, Mr. Chair, that through the, maybe ask the applicant, this was on a waiver, or was it on the zoning review?
It was done by way of waiver, but the waiver does make reference to the correct bylaw. This was just a transcription error from our waiver to the notice.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
All right. Yeah, I'm satisfied if our Deputy Secretary Treasurer is to proceed with that amendment. Okay, if it's all right with you, I will take this into committee. All right, let's go into committee.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like, if there are no comments, I'm okay to make a motion.
Yeah?
Yes, I'd like to forward a motion to approve this application. I believe it's satisfied the four tests, and there are no other conditions, I don't see them.
All right, do I have a second or, second by Ms. Sankar? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, that motion carries. The application is approved. All right, staff, do we want to leave 15 until the end? Yes, all right. Okay, so moving right along, number 18, we deferred earlier. So we're on the last item on our agenda, the second last item of the day. Number 19, 345 Lawrence Avenue West. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a two-story rear and front additions. This property was the subject of a previous minor variance application, which was considered back on August 14th of this year and approved on condition. We have one variance, side yard setback, on file material from the applicant, and two letters in support. Let's get our agent online.
Hi there, my name is Eti Joshua of 7950 Bathurst, and I'm the agent for this application.
All right, I think I know the answer, but just to get on the record, what brings you back to our committee today?
Yes, so unfortunately, there was a slight error on the notice of decision that went out to the public. So we've tried this one more time to have another go and get all of it cleared up as needed.
All right, so my understanding is, we had an approval, this variance was missed. Rather than defer, we proceeded, the application was subsequently approved, and then after the fact, you guys found out you needed another variance.
Yes, exactly. As soon as we applied for the zoning certificate release, the examiner brought it to our attention, and we brought it to the committee's attention and brought forth another application, and we are here today to hopefully resolve all the variances.
All right, hold on there. We do have another neighbor online.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, yes, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, can you just please verify through the architect agent that the plans before us or you today is exactly the same plan that was before the committee on August 14th, and that the single variance was the one that was missed?
Yes, thank you for that.
Yes, 100%. There have been zero revisions to the plans from the previous application, zero revisions to any of the materials submitted previously in the original application, and we are only seeking this one variance.
All right, thank you for confirming that. It does appear we have a neighbor online. Yeah. The owner. I should ask, do we need to hear from the owner? Or, I do have somebody else on my speakers list, but it looks like they're part of your party. Yeah, I do, I note the same names are noted as the owner on the public hearing notice. They are permitted to speak, but. All right, yes, let's hear from them.
Oh, I guess you unmuted me?
Yes.
So no, neither my wife or I are speaking, Eti is speaking on our behalf. But thank you for giving us the opportunity.
No, of course, I want to make sure that nobody's missed in my hearing. Okay, I'll go back to the agent. I don't require a presentation. I'm gonna ask my colleagues whether or not they require a presentation.
Sure.
Okay, if it's all right with you, take this into committee for a decision for you.
That'll be great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Joshua. Okay, let's go into committee. Ms. Sankar.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, you know, looking at this, and especially from the last version, it's a very simplified version that's being brought forward here. I understand the application, and I do understand that there are letters of support and no other concerns that are arising from staff or planning in any way or any of the other divisions that do look at our applications. And so for that reason, I feel comfortable in putting forward a motion to approve this application. So unless anyone has any other contradicting concerns, I can put forward a motion.
Sure, I think you might have a second for Mr. Fazeli, is that, yes?
Okay, so I motion to approve this application as is.
Okay, he's very eager. Okay, so thank you, Ms. Sankar, a motion to approve a subject application, a seconded by Mr. Fazeli, and no conditions on that motion for approval. Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous, that application is approved. Hopefully, we can get your client on their way with that. Okay, we're going back to the last item we skipped over for afternoon session. Number 15, I believe, yes. Number 15, 34 Milden Hall Road. This is application to legalize and maintain the existing landscape conditions with one variance before us for soft rear yard landscaping. We have our agent back.
Yeah, hey, thank you very much for giving me the chance again. Yes, I look into my emails, and yes, I had sent the updated drawings to, on the 8th of October.
Okay, I'm going to check in with staff. Staff, did we have anything that we received on the 8th of October? Oh, and could you confirm who you sent it to?
Yes, yes, I'm gonna give you the name and the email address, I do have that. It's Sina Zikriya, Sina Zikriya, and the email address is sina, S-I-N-A, sina.zikriya, Z-E-K-R-I-A, at Toronto.ca.
Okay, I think I've got a good grasp of what happened here. So you sent the updated site plan to one of our planners in community planning. Committee of Adjustment, we're separate, so that would have had to go over to us. Unfortunately, we don't have anything in the public file, we don't have anything in our package, so I think the best solution or path forward I can offer is maybe a suggestion to defer this application so that we can get that updated site plan in our package, and we can review that. I'll be honest, without a site plan, it's going to be almost near impossible to provide any approval, at least if I can speak for myself. I would require an up-to-date site plan to approve any minor variance application.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the other issue is that there has been no public review.
Yes, yes.
Of the site plan, and I would probably wonder out loud if the survey is up to date.
Yes, yeah, so you've heard, there might be concern that the survey may or may not be up to date. But also, to the point made by our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, I also, and I agree with him wholeheartedly, we want to ensure that what, that this document is obtained such that it can be uploaded to the public file. If there's anyone in the public that wants to comment, they have to be provided that opportunity to review the file as it is complete. So an incomplete application at this point.
If you have any facility, I can send the updated site plan. It's in front of me, unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, I can accept it. Unfortunately, yes, you should send that site plan, but it's not something that I would be able to review at the hearing today because it hasn't been, it would, frankly, it's just coming to us now. So it hasn't been put out there for public consumption. Does that make sense?
Yeah, everything, whatever you say, it makes sense, but the point, like, if you guys defer it, it will like linger on the project, that's the only thing we.
Yeah, unfortunately, my hands are tied. I mean, we could proceed on the basis of this application, we could proceed without a site plan, but I wouldn't recommend it. I think it would be appropriate to defer, get that document into committee, and as soon as you've confirmed that document, we'll get you scheduled in for the next hearing. Yes, Mr. Deputy Secretary Treasurer.
Through you, Mr. Chair, the other greater concern is that we know the site plan is not correct upon this review because there were pictures shown of a pickleball court, which does not show up in the survey, and it does not show up on a submitted site plan. So we're not giving fair transparency to the public that we have all the information you need to render a fully informed decision based on evidence. No such evidence exists at this point, therefore, it would be inappropriate for the panel to adjudicate this.
Yes, yes, and that, well said. I fully agree with Deputy Secretary Treasurer there. So I'll tell you what, does that sound like a viable path forward? Perhaps I can ask my colleagues whether they would support a deferral of this? Give you an opportunity to get that document in, and we will get this back on our agenda as soon as we can for you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's go into committee. Yes, Ms. Sankar.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, I motion to defer this application, signee die, to be able to get that new site plan up for everyone and circulate it.
All right, seconded by Mr. Majari, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, that deferral request is approved. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes our hearing for today. Thank you, everybody.
I motion to terminate.
Yes, the time is now 4:29. You have a motion by Ms. Sankar to terminate the hearing. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fazeli, all in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Bye, everyone.